All right, welcome to the town council meeting for October 24th, 2017. I'm gonna open the meeting with a pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment, a moment of silence, we'll reflect on our duties here as members of the town council and remember our soldiers at home and away and our first responders. Thank you. We're in accordance with Mass General laws, we are taping the meeting. Is anybody else taping the meeting? Nope. All right. Public comments? Tom, we have none. Council comments? Nope. All right. Town manager report.
Good evening, everyone. I received notification today that the, from the school superintendent, that the accelerated repair for the windows and doors project at Meadowbrook was approved for 55 percent reimbursement. So that's an awesome amount. I'm surprised it's as high as it is. So that's a good omen for maybe any other projects that might be coming up would also qualify at that level. I attended the local committee, Community Mitigation Advisory Committee for the first time. This is a state organized committee formed to assist communities potentially impacted by the Springfield Casino Project with funding to help mitigate. They have a big pocket of money there, and I hear this a lot out this way, that there's a casino out Boston Way as well, that a lot of funding goes to the eastern part of the state, that the western part of the state is not as well.
Shocking. There is no western part of the state.
It seems to be a bit invisible. So, so these, these folks are there to assist us in trying to get some funding if there are issues that we encounter. We would expect they would likely be traffic issues, and I spoke to the chief after that meeting, and what they suggested is to be sure that we have good data, which he has, on traffic conditions and accidents now, so that in a year, I think they said December of next year, that they plan to come online, the casino, and at that point, if we see...
August.
August?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Close enough. That they, if we see some traffic pattern changes, that we do have a place to at least help us fund some studies at first and possibly projects. Yes?
Just a couple of things. When, when this first started, I was on the board of selectmen.
And you were the person on this board.
Yeah, and I was involved in it. And so as you know, we are getting money, as soon as our doors open, we start getting our mitigation payments. And when we, funny, I don't know if it's gonna actually prove true, but when we had, we had a study done, and the casino had a study done as far as traffic change, you know, how much traffic would be impacted, and they were doing mainly like, I think, North Main Street in eighty-three, and one came out with a five percent increase and one came out with a six percent increase. So they were saying it wasn't gonna be a, as bad of an effect, you know, but obviously you won't know that till it opens.
Right, right.
But in any event, you know, we just, there were studies done, and then I know the casino was gonna allow, I think it's, I think there's a, two, after two years, you can re, you know, take a new look at it based on what we have now for our mitigation, and then if there's changes, we can ask for more money. And then I think it's two years and five years, if I remember correctly.
And they, and there are grants attached to this committee that they said are very simple to do, and they're there to assist. So I, I don't think it's a tricky kind of process, but it's good to certainly be aware of it. We'll be contracting with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to use one of their planners, Larry Smith, to assist us while the department is shorthanded. We're looking at using Mr. Smith for ten hours a week, and to attend the third me, the third week of the, would be the second, second meeting of the month, planning board meeting. He's unavailable for the first meeting of the month, so I'll still be staffing that. I look forward to having a meeting with him tomorrow, to probably button up what the agreement is, how, how we expect him to address the needs of, if five of those hours or two of those hours can be from home, or something like that, if he's, he's, he's a pretty popular guy. So he's working in South Hadley, I think, I think I told you all once before, Munson, Granby, so he's got like four other communities that he's working, but he can still do our stuff. We, I need to figure out how we put that all together. So it will, it will help us with some of the planning challenges that we have going on now.
Can we, go ahead. I was gonna say, can we squeeze a little time out of him to at least take a review and give comments on the marijuana bylaw?
Uh, he's already doing that.
He is, so he'll get, he'll be able to share a report with us as well.
He's actually an expert in that field with Pioneer Valley.
Excellent.
Is that the right person?
Yes.
Is there, you mentioned a number of towns?
Yes.
Can you tell me what those towns were again?
I think it's, either South Hadley or Hadley. I know Granby is one, I think Munson may be one. I can get that list.
Okay.
I think maybe Ludlow. Yeah, yeah. I'll get the list. The town's 2009 Pierce Engine Three is out of service for repair, and you're going to see a Springfield truck around. We're borrowing one from Springfield, just to keep our numbers level, so that we can address all the needs of the department as we are. Also, the fire department open house was great, well attended, a lot of things for the kids, I, I thought it was very well done. So for those of you that did not attend, a couple...
The pizza was quite thin.
I didn't have the pizza, but I had the popcorn. Did you go in the bounce house? I was a little afraid of that.
Stay clear of that.
I hate it.
A couple of council members have asked about some recent Board of Health actions. I can provide whatever information the council would find helpful and can certainly have the Board of Health come to a future council meeting to address any questions or concerns the council may have. You all just need to let me know what would be helpful as far as information, whether it's their authority, or what they're doing, or why they're doing it. That would be probably better with them in person. So please, that would be a decision of the council, so let us know that.
Yeah, I just wanna comment on that because this, this will tie in a little bit to my subcommittee report, just a little anyway, is about the whole thing of communication, because, you know, this isn't like, this is a challenge more than a slight. It's, I found out about this letter going out through a constituent, sending it to me on social media as a private message, and I was able to read it. I'm a business owner. I didn't even get it. It went to the owner, I mean, we, the one who owned the plaza that I'm in, I assume, and that still wasn't shared. So one of the things that, that I've mentioned before is, as members of the town council, we, to the right or wrong, the public sees us as a source of information. So if it was but for this one business owner constituent who sent me a private message on Facebook, I wouldn't have known about this. And it's kind of awkward, so I think we have to have as a challenge that any of our department heads who are setting something that's impacting our people, just a simple courtesy FYI to the council, so that we know. Because you might say, well, it's not within your purview. Tell that to the people watching, tell that to the people we encounter. It's just, I think that's something, and second, second tier is on the question of authority. I would definitely love to have either representatives over there to come before us, because the question that was raised, and I, and I have to ask, and I still give some weight to this, is what was their authority to go beyond the scope of what the, our bylaw says is our, our, what do you call it, recycling program? Our recycling program specifically says...
I can comment on that if you'd like to.
Please. Love to.
So after hearing from you, I think it was last Thursday, and then I actually talked to Tom about it, and so what it's, it's a state regulation, it has nothing to do with the bylaws that we have in the town, it's a state regulation mandated by DEP.
Okay.
So if you have a private hauler that actually works, that you contract with to haul your trash, A, they're responsible for the sorting of the recycling goods, or whatever you wanna call it, however they figure that out, at the station where they bring it. They're obligated under this regulation from DEP to provide a barrel for your business to throw your recycled containers in, like on your way out the door, or for the waitress, if she gives you a plastic bottle or whatever to throw it in there. The hauler is actually responsible for that, not the business owner. So this is something that we have not necessarily been in compliance with, but it's a DEP regulation through the state, so it's above and beyond what the bylaw requi, what our bylaw, it has really nothing to do with us in that regard. It's a state regulation that the Board of Health is trying to kinda...
Catch up.
Catch up on, and now that they have, we have a recycling coordinator, which we never had before, that position is new, so part of that responsibility is to ensure that we're in compliance with those DEP mandates, so...
So we should also perhaps update our section 4.040, because the letter, as I understand, again, I'm just looking at a secondhand copy, refers to Mass General laws forty-eight H, and it talks about the local legislative body, which is us, creating a recycling program, and the wording, again, damn lawyer me, it says, "Any recycling program established pursuant to this section may require that all residents, schools, businesses in the town." Reading the bylaw, it's only mentions residents. So in order for us to be in compliance, should we then entertain a future, for administrative purposes, expanding the mandatory recycling to include businesses and schools with, which are other options that are in the statute? I ask just, you know, maybe direct it through town council, something to consider.
Just a point of information from my own experience as it relates to the schools. They, the schools have been separating paper and cardboard, every school has a cardboard dumpster for at least eight years.
Yeah.
There was a move afoot to begin to do that with the plastic. There are not too many bottles on, of most of the campuses.
Most water bottles.
Yeah. And a lot of that is managed through each of the schools, you know, the kids get together and start environmental clubs, so that, that's been in place. I don't, I can't speak to how effective it is, but I know there's a dumpster, a cardboard dumpster, and papers collected separately on each of the five properties.
Okay.
And, and you know, it's just something that you mentioned, Don, it is a very kind of fine balancing act between what department heads disseminate for information, because if you had gotten that, then you would have responded to that, and then all of a sudden that they're, they're, you know, you're in a rapport with them, when they don't report directly to us. And so they have to do their jobs, and so it's a balance between, we get some information, but we, we shouldn't be micromanaging a department head who's doing what they believe is, is to the letter of, of the law, and it just hasn't been done in the past. And there's been other examples too, where, you know, we've, we've all, like, I've come across it a couple times as well, and I'm not sure exactly what the right thing is, but they don't report to us. So if we have all these department heads that are sending us information, and we're responding to them, saying, wait a minute, I don't know if that's right, and then next you know, we're overstepping our bounds. So I...
That's a pretty dangerous spot.
Yeah. And, but at the same time, I, I do understand his position. I, I'm, I'm okay getting information from you, we're meeting, you know, every other week. There hasn't been a whole lot of mission critical stuff that we've missed.
No, no. My, my point is...
Just to your point real quickly, hold on one second.
Go ahead, please.
Is that Denise and I had spoken about this after the letter was out and it was run up, and we agreed that at some point, we might have had better communication about the letter, so we would have all kinda like just had the heads up that it was going out, just to be aware of it and just in case.
Well, I should have had that communication as well, as well as you.
So, no, that's right, we kinda talked about the sort of direction that communication should go with the sort of pitfalls that we ran into during this particular one, but to try and make sure that that doesn't happen.
No, again, my, my point on this particular situation is, you know, excellent point, is the fact that on the surface, it appears just by reading our bylaw, that what they did expanded our statutory authority to create a recycling program, where the provisions of it may include residents, schools, and businesses, and our bylaw specifically only includes residents. So that on its face would raise at least a question to say, where does your authority come from? Well, it comes from the statute, but the statute's very first line says, "By approval of the local legislative body." That's us.
What statute is that, Don?
Forty-eight H. Chapter forty, section eighty-eight. If, if, again, unless there's a different statute.
I think it's section forty, chapter eleven is, is what they, they're basing there.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to reconcile it, that's all.
And after, after you had spoken to me, certainly, and I've gotten, like I said in my, in my report, I've had other councilmen as well, I, it's a bit subjective as to what you're going, what the hot buttons are going to be. On this particular one, I get it, and I wasn't, I didn't even have the copy of the letter ahead of time. I've been in your shoes, I've been in the grocery store and been the head and had a department head do something that was like, "I can't believe you're yelling at me, I don't even know about this, I'll go talk to them."
Right.
If, if that happens in any, if I miss the mark on something and not letting you all know, certainly call me, and I will find out, as I did in this case. And I have other information, but I didn't know exactly what it was that you wanted. I do have what this was based on, what the, what the authority is based on, and I can get that to the council in the morning. I can send you a copy of that information, so that, that you have that. But, but thank you, Joe, I, for recognizing that it's, it's difficult. If, if all of you are calling each individual department head, saying, "Why did you send that budget document out," or "Why," that gets a little, a little dicey.
If you went over the rules and referred whoever is on the communication flow of information is supposed to go.
I don't think, this is my opinion, I don't necessarily, if I got the letter or anything, I wouldn't necessarily go to Amy or whoever, you know, and then talk about it, I'd probably go through you if I had any questions at all. But my concern, if you will, is, you know, we've got people out there, and they, it's like, somebody comes to you with a letter, and you know nothing about it, and we're supposed to be town officials, you know, how does it make us look?
I get it.
I mean, you know, it's like I've had forty thousand people ask me about that damn gas station, and, and they say, "It's gonna open next week." Well, who owns it? I don't know. You know, I mean, I mean, how do you think we look? We look like idiots, you know, I mean, just putting it basically, you know.
It's AMG Retail. AMG Retail.
But they don't want that, they wanna know who the, the brand is going to be.
Well, you know, part of this is conditioning the public, you know, that this is different than it used to be.
Different. It's not the Board of Selectmen.
So are we supposed to know that?
I think so.
I don't know. No, I don't think we should.
But we don't even know as far as the testing.
I don't think we should know all of that. I don't, I don't think it's, it's essential for me to know some of those things to answer that question, because I can refer them to other people like Denise. So I'm, I'm just looking at it a little different way. I'm saying, we have to empower people to do their job, that we have to look at it like, if we want anything, it's gotta funnel through Denise. So if Denise knows, and you feel it's, you know, critical, then you've gotta let us know.
Absolutely.
So that we have a heads up, so we have some information between meetings, but we're meeting every two weeks.
I think it's fair to say that a communication from a department head that goes out to either the, the full residents, or in this case, to all the businessmen, through you, we simply need an FYI.
Right.
You just, afford everything.
Well, I, I should be copying.
But I absolutely...
Spies attributed to it.
Right. I don't, I, I am not in favor of micromanaging department heads, they're there for a reason to do their job, and that ought to be your responsibility, it was just an FYI.
Then just send the letter.
Yeah, just copy the letter and send it along.
And I was in that position Denise talked about.
Well, this one there wasn't.
Where I was, talked to in many different venues about this issue, and I knew nothing about it. And I don't think we're looking to micromanage what goes on in the town, in my opinion, I don't think that's the correct thing to do. It needs to come from you. And it's difficult to determine what to disseminate to us, but I think, as Kathy stated, if it goes out to the general public, or if it goes out to the businesses, we should get a heads up.
Yeah.
A heads up, that's all.
I agree.
Got a plan?
Sauce.
Wow, huh? Quick.
So, so, let's see, update on a couple of legal matters, and town attorney's here, so he'll, he'll recognize these, because I've asked him, I asked him last week for some information, and, and he'll, here's a surprise visit that I had late this afternoon on another. Regarding Maple, Maple Street Tree 4013, Attorney Donio's reported that a hearing date has been set for December first. Once that aspect of the case has been determined, either by dismissal of the counterclaims or the need to go forward on them, a discovery timetable will be established for the action. Attorney Donio is also awaiting a response from the owner's attorney, whether the property owner is interested in resolving the zoning complaint, which is my pointed question. Yeah, maybe they're allowed a storage yard, it still is, that is not a storage yard, that's a mess, and something needs to be done. North Street Figaro, I had a surprise visit late this afternoon from the property owner and his attorney, Attorney Silva.
Isn't that Attorney A and the Attorney A B?
Very confusing. They've promised to deliver up-to-date plans that they said they've been supplying the town with all along, but they're going to...
They'd already promised to supply us with up-to-date plans.
For three months is what I told them, and they said, Attorney Silva said, "I gave those to everybody that needed them," and I don't know where they're going, so I don't have any idea.
Ever hear of certified mail or email or...
No. What I'm doing is, I told them, I told them to come, come into my office at eight-thirty tomorrow morning, hand me the plans, I will hand them a receipt, and bring the receipt anytime. So they're coming in the morning with plans. I actually volunteered to call their architect, and they said, "We don't have the number." I said, "You know what, I can get it online."
Remember, your own architect is telling the plans?
I got it, but it went to voicemail, so I, I missed that one. So they're coming in the morning, once we have the plans with the building and all of the amenities there, then we can determine the zoning violations, building violations, a, a plan for what we need to get done. So they promised that they're getting that done in the morning, so isn't that good news? Also, Attorney Donio will be attending a status conference shortly on, on issues relating to the property. And I have three reminders for you. Saturday, October twenty-eighth, this Saturday, the police department is holding a collection for safe disposal of unused medications. I know some residents here have told me they have a basket on the top of their refrigerator that's full, that they've had it for four years, and they don't know what to do with it. So good time to get rid of all of that. November ninth, the, there's a veterans dinner at the COA. It starts at five-thirty, and Carolyn is actually looking for people to help serve. I, I volunteered to, to be a server for, this is serving the veterans, so if any of you are interested, you can let me know or let Carolyn know. They, I've been told it's a very nice dinner. And finally, Saturday, November eleventh, is Veterans Day, actual Veterans Day, celebrated on Veterans Day, and you have the specifics of that. Step off will be at the American Allegion at ten forty-five, and the details of the rest of the ceremony is, is in the flyer that you've received. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. So we can move on to the approval of minutes, but I wasn't here, so I don't understand, but we're gonna motion to approve the October tenth, two thousand seventeen open session minutes as of now.
I'll make a motion to approve them as amended. I made a couple of changes to my subcommittee report, which I've shared with Jeannie.
Second? It's moving second. Any further discussion?
I'm staying.
All right, communication correspondence and announcements, so under that, we have seven A, which is our subcommittees. Kathy, you are up for the licensing subcommittee report.
All right, thank you. The licensing subcommittee met this past Friday for the second time. As I stated out, the, two weeks ago, that our charge is, right now, threefold. Try to standardize hours of operation for all of the establishments who are taking liquor or wine and malt licenses through the town, to look, review the fee schedule, and we are in the process of that now. We are learning, as we have examined the fee schedules of sixteen communities around us, that we, our fees are back in the dinosaur age somewhere, that the last time they were looked at was nineteen eighty-nine, and so we'll be bringing them into a two thousand seventeen, eighteen kind of focus.
You can wait twenty-nine years and do it again.
Yes, we can. Interestingly, as we've looked at the various surrounding communities, many of them appear to review those fees annually, which would, likely would become a recommendation from our committee to the council. I think that just makes good sense, from just a, a business standpoint, just to make sure we're in sync with our sister communities. And then, so at our next meeting, we're going to finalize a, a recommendation for a new fee schedule that will come to the council. And we have begun a initial work on a bylaw that speaks to the, the fact that anyone, any entity holding a liquor license of any nature must be compliant with tax obligations, with health codes, with fire and police and safety codes, and building codes. And should they fall out of compliance in any one of those areas, then it would, the town would file a request with the ABCC to investigate with the intent to suspend the license for a period of time until the problems are mitigated. We expect to come back before this council at the second November meeting, but the very first December meeting at the very latest, to have final recommendations on everything. So this is good to go for January first.
Thank you.
I have one question. So if we were able to finalize everything by January first, would we be able to make these changes work by sometime early in July, to give the, give everyone ample time to adapt to the changes?
The hours of...
Should I understand? Sorry, Kathy, but what I understand is our hours of operation we could do by July. Fees are gonna be...
Effective right away.
Effective, well, the license renewals are up now. The notices are out. So from what I gather, Jeannie sent the notices out from the state through the clerk's office, that they're up for renewal. So the fee schedule would have to change effective next year, because the notices went out with the fees already for the upcoming year. So hours of operation and standardizing that, which we had talked about, right?
My understanding was that, that letter that was going out, which is a notification from the state, this is what we discussed in committee last week, was it would also include a paragraph explaining that these changes are coming.
Well, they were already set up to go out, this just quickly came up, they were already set up to go out, so we're gonna send a separate, we can send a separate notice as soon as we decide.
I think it's...
Which I think, we're meeting Friday, right Kathy?
No, not till November eighth.
When they get the license, can a notice go in with the license saying your, your fee could possibly increase July first or something?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, is actually send them a, a notice separate from the state license. Originally the plan was to put it with the state notice that went out, that we were considering this or whatever, but hasn't come back for full consideration, so, and they were ready to go out, and the timeframe to...
Yeah, you don't wanna like crunch it.
Get it all done was, we were in a window of time that wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna work for us, so... So when the state license is up?
Yeah.
So when the license is up, then the fee will, could change.
Which is, what, twenty seventeen, right? The end of twenty seventeen?
Yeah.
So these new fees will be applicable January one, twenty eighteen, correct? Fees?
As long as you can notice them.
So you, you said the notices have already gone out?
The state notices went out.
Okay.
So we have to follow up with a notice once we decide on, as a full board, what, let's say we're all in agreement, the fees, the fee schedule is as such, if we can get it before they come for renewal, you can notify them.
And the, and the renewal date is?
And we were gonna say, Kathy, there was one I talked to, Jeannie and Tom, about sending out a notice, advisory... Advising them that we were considering-
Changes are coming, yeah.
Yeah, that we are considering the, these particular changes, which will affect however they will be affected, so it's not a surprise when they get a letter saying that-
Yes.
This is what happened.
Excuse me, are the applications are due back to the town by December first?
Right.
So, it's really tight for me guys approving a new fee schedule, because, and the application's about with the fees on, which we can get to.
We could have a fee schedule at the end of our November seventh, eighth meeting. I, we're very close. We just want the consensus of the whole committee, and then it can come back to this board-
To the council.
-on the November fourteenth meeting.
That way, it doesn't make the date so tight, right Jean, if we can do that?
Well, the annual license is not ha- as of the end, right? They had to be out.
So, they, so they've already gone out?
The notifications went out.
Okay, so-
So, we have to change it for eighteen.
Yeah, exactly. Can't change it this year, doesn't sound like.
Or nineteen, rather.
I don't know that I would agree with that. If we have the authority to make those changes, and we notice them, and we, we're not talking about these fees tripling or quadrupling, we're talking about just coming in to sync with area communities. Yes, it'll be probably an increase for most of the categories, but-
Yeah, but how can you increase when there are-
If they've already gotten their, their application with a fee on it, how can you change it after the fact?
Do you do a supplemental?
I think we can, the committee will address that, and we'll, we'll come up with-
I mean, worst-case scenario, we change it effective in nineteen?
Right.
Best-case scenario, we can change it for eighteen.
But the operation hours, we're looking at six months out, which would put us in a lot.
Right. In the event that it affects the employment of any folks at any of these places, the owners ought to have enough lead time to let them-
Make whatever changes.
So, do you hold up on any other notices going out? Cause there are a lot to go out. That's, that's holding out another, you know, week or two or anything. I thought you said they were already out, the annual.
Yeah, the annual, the annuals are for like the tax forms.
Entertainment, automatic amusement.
Oh, we're, we're not, we're talking just liquor. We're not talking any of those other licenses.
Those are going out, yeah.
Those should, yes. The committee will deal with that eventually, but we'll be in to two thousand eighteen before we get to entertainment and-
Lots of other things.
Milk.
Milk, dairy farming, whatever the other, there's a lot of them, you're right.
I know, it's funny though, right? It's a milk, you have to have a separate license for milk.
Yes.
But the liquor aspect, we're probably talking about, what, sixteen?
Hmm, maybe about twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Cut it way down from the big picture.
Other fees are, we're looking at those separately.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even think of that, with all those, all those, that's-
In all likelihood, that would be for two thousand nineteen. But we'll have it in place probably by-
Well, if we go by our twenty-nine-year schedule, we can-
We'll be done in twenty-nine years, we'll have it for you.
We're way out of there.
Don, you're up for your media sub, communication, thank you Kathy, again, media, media communications subcommittee report.
Thank you. On the nineteenth, we held our first meeting at the library, and, uh, I had Dylan Pylon, Donnie Kavanaugh, Brian Quimby, Ed Zemba showed up, Deirdre Mayu from the, the chair of the school committee, audited the meeting, and loved it so much, she wants to become a member, and she will be. And, uh, and then we also have Amy Myrecki, who, um, who wrote to me, she wasn't able to make the meeting, she's in a lot of, you know, great ideas, strong communication background, involved with the young professionals, so she's gonna be joining the team as well. We talked over, uh, basic stuff, like, uh, the reason for creating the subcommittee, which we all know, short-term goals, and one of the immediate short-term goals, and that's why we haven't scheduled the next meeting, is I'm gonna try, I'm working with, uh, Ryan, to see if we can get who's the administrating currently the social media sites for the town, and see if we could have a meeting, and find out when they're together, and maybe, um, post a, a meeting, just have like a, seeing if everybody on the same, uh, social media page, if you will. Um, as I mentioned, one of our, our, our goals is not to take over their sites, not to take over anything, but to get the message out. Uh, we used a larger library room, where Ryan used his laptop and put on the screen the town's, uh, website, and we looked at, like, one of their more urgent campaigns is their nine-one-one program, which is, which I've already signed up for, you know, we're trying to get the word out. And it was maybe eleven or thirteen shares on it to other pages, which is, which is ridiculously low. Half of them were from people from, in this committee, you know? So, like, obviously, we got the right people, that was just pure coincidence that that happened. And, um, so, the idea is to try to get the message out. Some of the ideas that came up were, have a kind of a fun contest of some sort, um, and try to get young people, maybe using their community service time, uh, to go to Big Y or something, and get people to register, to sign up, to get, uh, on the Facebook page, and so forth. The goal ultimately, the short-term goal right now is, is without any money allocated, because we don't have a budget, is to just to push the needle, to see if we can get more and more people aware of the good works that's being done here in Eslo Meadow, the important lifesaving things that we're offering our citizens, as well as, you know, some of our social groups, uh, to get, you know, let messages about experiencing Eslo Meadow and other events have even, you know, reach more and more people. And if we can push the needle a little bit, we might be asking in fiscal nineteen, uh, maybe a small sum of like a thousand dollars for a social media money budget, because it doesn't take a lot of money to target just Eslo Meadow, maybe ten bucks, and to get one campaign, it hits every Eslo Meadow social media user on Facebook to let them know about a particular thing. So, we're not talking big bucks, but our challenge right now is to, is to, uh, push the needle. The other thing we talked about on a town level is how that, you know, we were talking about, you know, I brought up the marijuana bylaw, that we only had one person show up to speak on it. And part of it is, the information's out there, but it's not being read. So, perhaps use the CNN approach, which is perhaps ad nauseam, but they keep using breaking news, breaking news. In other words, dissect public meetings, public hearings, just, that's it. You know, send everybody the, you know, the, the agendas, that's a good thing. But if whoever's in charge of the social media, whoever the clerks are who design agendas, send out the, "Hey, public hearing on marijuana, public hearing for whatever, any other topic that's important," or the, um, uh, the adult entertainment bylaw. Again, I found that out through another social media site that was shared, then reshare it on my page, okay? Now, that's a very easy thing to do. And what I suggested, and the, the, the subcommittee seemed to be in approval of, is I talked to Ryan, 'cause I know that we can do it, is we can just type in towncouncil@eslometto, blah, 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 and all of us get that email. I don't have to type each of our names, I just type in that. So, if we can create a group, simple email address, that includes town officials, appointed department heads, that's it. The ones, you know, and send out, "Hey, big, you know, we have a town meet, we have a, a public hearing on this day." That's all, to everyone, not overload them, so that it hits the radar, breaking news. That, I think, would go a long way to increase attendance by either us at these type of, you know, like the adult entertainment bylaw, or, or on the receiving end, at our meetings, for say, a marijuana bylaw, or something, something that rises to the level that we're going, "Hear ye, hear ye, people of town, come gather." And if we're aware of that, and that can be dissected by whoever's writing up these agendas, and just separates the public hearing component of it, and sends it out to town of East, you know, you know, whatever you wanna call it, blah, blah, eslometto.gov, then that's a very simple way to get the message out, and to cut through a lot of the email clutter that we're getting. So, that's about it. We'll schedule a meeting soon enough, I'm waiting, again, to try to get, uh, see who the players are, so we can get this message out to the people in the town.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, and that's Tom. Our orders today for licensing matters, we actually are canceling that hearing, right? The license, they're not here.
You have a comment, Vic, for AMG retail?
They're not ready.
That's what it seems like. Yeah, I've tried to, to reach out, contact them a number of times, and haven't heard anything.
He's on the road. He's been on the road.
And this is the infamous gas station.
So, we're gonna postpone that until they're ready, I guess. Old Business?
They're sure.
That's what she, yeah, they're not ready. Paul, they're not ready.
Now, you can answer the residents.
It's AMG, it's AMG retail, that's who owns it, too.
I'm gonna tell them to recycle, too.
Tom, you're on the, this is you, the department head bylaw revision guidelines requirements that we talked about, so you're up.
Yeah, this is, uh, just wanted to come to the council. Um, the, the final step in the bylaw revisions, the, uh, the, uh, subcommittee took a look at that early this year, and the last step was to go back to the department heads, and have them do their update, you know, their bylaws and, and provisions. And basically, what we're looking for is just to be consistent, some consistencies, as far as, you know, all the department heads include their terms, who the hiring manager is, maybe there's some of their job duties, um, you know, reference statutes, we all have duties and responsibilities from the state level, you know, like, uh, what each individual department head needs to do, like can you take the oath, you know, uh, responsibilities by the laws of the state, and the laws of the, uh, of the town. Um, but I guess, you know, what I'm looking for is guidance, maybe review on the consistencies. Um, there's a sample that was handed out as, um, you know, from the, uh, the town of Braintree, for example.
And you look, just so you, you have, it's a whole book?
Yeah, yeah.
The Braintree, yeah, the one job insurance is there is that.
Their charter and bylaws were, again, it's just a sample, but it shows, you know, what another town, you know, they went through the same thing, they went from-
The level of detail.
Yeah, the level of detail, from, uh, old bylaws to what we're going to right now after they, uh, adopted a charter and updated their bylaws.
Of course, I like that book, but that's just me.
And that's all the bylaws for the town, the city of Braintree?
Yeah, basically, you got every department, every, how, when they were established, everything.
It's supposed to be consistent, because Tom and I talked about it a little, and it needs to be determined by you all, but you have some departments that aren't even spoken to in the, in the bylaws. So, either we do them all, and we do them all to a certain level-
We do.
-so that, so that when you go, what does that department, what are they responsible for, under what, you know, statutes or, or general laws are they, um, established by? All of that, um, any department, or, or you just have very little information for all of them. Um, and it, it seems like, uh, what they have for, what you have for an example is a great example, I thought, and a good way to-
Yeah, I like that.
And again, it's new, it's transitioning, stuff that we've never had before, and to go forward, this was a, a big step from the bylaw subcommittee, was at this point, turn it over to the department heads, let them update what they have, or add any provisions that's necessary to their operations moving forward, that should be in the bylaws.
One comment, Tom, as a member of the, the bylaws committee, our charge was to look at the charter and the bylaws, and to put the two in, uh, in sync with each other. I don't think that's up on the website yet.
No.
Uh, the old bylaws are still up? If we could, since we voted on that already, that could go up in lieu of the new bylaws, which will take some time to get up there, I think that would be a good start.
Cause they were approved at the, by the council, so they, even though they're being worked on some more, the new version is what-
Newest version.
Right, we'd be the content experts, which are the, the department heads and-
And that'll be a revision again, probably in a few months.
Right. But right now, it still says, "References, board of selectmen, and former government."
Yeah, definitely, the new one should be.
All right. Thank you, Tom. New business? None. My answer matters, we have none. That's good. Public hearings, none. Nothing, Jim? Executive session, none?
We do have an adjournment.
We do have an adjournment on number eleven, so, uh-
More prepared to do that.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second? There's some over?
Second.
Move in second, in all favor?
Aye.